You know, I just thought I'd give some of these scores to you to take a look at and do we need to do some work? Yes. But if we take a look at some of the other stuff, it's especially the highlighted ones. I feel like they've come a long way and they're continuing to grow. It'd be nice. Third grade is a little iffy because first year testing, first year going through that stuff, but they still produced really, really well. And, you know, it's just a nice thing to see. So I thought maybe you'd like to see some of that current data. And then the rest of it is just a bunch of dates, which I know you already have, but kind of laid them out for you in just in case you had some questions regarding any of the coming up events.
Can I just add something to that?
Sure.
When we first came out with these, the state testing, when you were using the laptop, I did not pass because I took the test, but I thought, and this is why with the kids, even with their practice, sometimes they think they got it. You have to move, sometimes you have to move the object to the, you know, an area. And it looks like it got moved because you did it with your, you know, your mouse. And then you go on to the next one and I never knew it was, it didn't get moved. But it looked like, so there's a little different, you know, idiosyncrasies that you're, it can be, the test itself is challenging, but the using technology can be just as challenging. So sometimes it's not a measure of the actual knowledge that you have in the subject area. It's the, you know, the manipulation of the technology.
Yeah, that's fine. And that's essentially.
So one of the things, and last time we got some test scores, I think in the fall, maybe beginning of the year. We had the discussion about, you know, sort of what our target numbers look like. And I think we had sort of asked just for some sort of like explanation about where we're, where we want to be. What, where a good school falls on this, you know, as far as like expectations and performance generally. And it sounds like you said shooting for 55% is.
Anytime I think you can see over 55% is, I know it doesn't sound great, but, but you also have to look at like the cusp kids. And so if we look at, so remember there's a score, one, two, three, four. Two is really interesting because it's designated as at or approaching. And so you don't get to tell, you don't get to figure out exactly where are they at? Meaning, meaning like what strands are they proficient in? What strands are they not proficient in? They don't tell you. So that designation of like a two, which means you're kind of a cusp kid. You might've missed it by one question or two questions. And to push that up. So it, there are so many kids out there that we have that are just like this far away from being a three. They'll be the three. And so when I look at the 55%, we didn't come up with that, Jay. That's just me, what I recognize, but as a staff, we have not had that discussion yet. As far as like, what do we want to go, what's our goal? What should we shoot for? Or what are we trying to shoot for? And I think ultimately, if you'd asked the staff, they would shoot for 100%, you know? But what is that question of what is a good school? I mean, I think we are a good school, you know? It's just testing sometimes doesn't look like that. So there's a really kind of like subjective kind of ways of looking at things. So no, but the answer is we don't have a designated target for that.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that, that good scores make a good school. Don't, don't get me wrong about that. You know, it's, it's one thing that we look at as far as, you know, a metric for evaluating, you know, where we're at. But it's just, it's difficult sometimes to, you know, we're looking at numbers and I see 92. Okay, that's good, right? We know that's good. That's amazing, right? That means 92% of the kids are three or four. You know, 62, 77, 58, 56. And, and then, you know, we get down into 46, 36, 25. Obviously 25 is an area that needs work, but there's, there's that, there's a range between 25 and 92. And, and you know, what are we, what are we shooting for? What would we, understanding that 100% is not a realistic target. Right. But, but you know, what is the realistic target? So I guess we just, I could just reiterate the.
I think it would be between 75 and above.
Okay.
It's hard to have a realistic target too, when you don't know who the class is made up of.
Yeah, I mean, obviously the size, class size is the.
I mean, if you've got a class size of 10 and eight of them are, have IEPs and special needs, you're not going to get over 75, you're just not. Or if you have a class of 10 and all of them are, you know, brain surgeon material, you're going to get over 75 every time. So it's hard, the percentages to me, now if it was on here that, you know, eight of those 10 children did, scored a three or four, and the other two had modified tests, then that's a real measurement. Now we know how well these kids did or whatever. But yeah, when you average in all of them, especially with parent and grandparents of kids that are not test takers, it's not.
I think, I think, you know, I can, I can kind of relate that to, you know, Jason and to as far as like, this is the conversation that you continue to have and want us to continue to have. It's like, what is realistic? What is that goal for the community?
Because one of the things, obviously this is one of the most visible metrics, visible metrics that the community can see.
Exactly.
And, and can look at and say, okay, we're doing all right. We're not doing all right, you know? And whether that's entirely useful is obviously debatable. But, you know, there is some value in understanding generally how we're doing statewide and, and on these sort of objective metrics. And so, you know, but for, from our perspective, it's, it's hard to sort of, if we see a 25, you know, that, that doesn't, that doesn't speak well to, to, or it says something. It's just hard for us to understand what that is without some sort of, something to gauge it against.
Understood.
Yeah.
Understood. We don't necessarily have anything at this point. We won't find out until later on in the calendar year as to where this ranks among the others.
Okay, gotcha.
If you know where that 25 is, if you know most of the students in that grade, that 25 is pretty awesome, actually. It really truly is. I mean, you know what I'm talking about. It's, I don't want to give anything away, but if you know the students in that grade, that's a really good score, in my opinion.
It's a, this is a really good conversation because, well, last meeting or meeting before, we were looking at the post gap graduate surveys. And, you know, what are, what are the metrics defining like quote unquote, good school? Right? Is, is it 100%? That's really hard to, right? Is that, is that really a table? No. You know, okay, well, then let's look at like, you know, that's, that's one certain metric to look at. And then you look at the graduates' scores or the, you know, postgraduate scores. Okay, what do they, what do they think of their little experience? And I'm, I'm sure there's another one that I'm not thinking of, but like other, there are tiers that you can look at and say, okay, this year our scores in, in ELA were here, but our postgraduate scores are here. I don't know if I'm explaining myself well, but there's just different accumulative or, you know, looking at a good school and two or three or four different metrics can help paint a better picture for everybody about how, how the school is performing.
Yeah, and I think things like the postgrads survey, the AP test performance, SAT and PSAT scores. You know, a lot of this stuff is standardized testing though. And again, that doesn't necessarily capture the breadth of the student's abilities, the talents, but the broader net that we cast when we're looking at the, the metrics, I think more makes sense. And I think there's value in at least having some way of, for the board to look at everything that we have, all the information that we can get and say, okay, where, where we need to really target our efforts at. You know, and where are we doing well? And, you know, if we're doing well in one area, is there a way to adapt what we're doing there to other areas? And, you know, just with the, with the objective to be just overall improvement generally. I think that's, should be one of our goals, or it is one of the goals. But that, I mean, we need to have a sort of a, at a minimum, just some way to interpret these that's more effective for us that who aren't in the classroom day to day and know the students and really have a better sense of, you know, the teachers certainly know who's doing well and who's not. But it's hard for us to have any way of interpreting these in the abstract.
Right, see, and, and these, like I said, these are, this is a big picture now. We're doing, they're doing the NWA's next. Those are more individual because those get into, like I said before, if you have a second grader taking this test, or if you're a third grader taking the test and they're at a first grade reading level in the fall, but then at the end of the year, they're third grade, that's two years growth that that child made.
So this is the one.
It's not going to show on a test.
And this is the one though, that we get that growth number though too, right?
We'll see the growth rate number. So that gives you the individualized.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the testing that's coming up? I saw on the calendar here.
Oh, the math testing, that's what she's doing.
The math testing, that's the, okay, so like the follow up and the year.
Yes.
And some of these blanks that you have here, so there's classes someone haven't finished. I mean, someone was still taking the test, you know, so just, this is just.
And the ELA scores, sorry, it's okay if I jump in. The ELA scores on the SAS testing are interesting. Somehow combine the writing portion with, we were talking about the state or faculty meeting. It's writing with the reading. Like, I don't know how they jam it all together, but those are two really different skills.
Yeah.
With the, the math testing, the NWA, is you have reading, then you have your language usage skills. So I prefer that because you can actually see a breakdown of different skills there.
And is that, that's the one that you can, you can actually get identifiable information about each student and to say, okay, we can target specific interventions. That's a bit more.
Yeah.
I mean, when some of these scores, I would say, okay, we probably have to look at the big picture. Like, does our program match? Does a curriculum match the standards? Does the programs match the curriculum for like, you know, those are the questions that this can answer a little bit. The other one gives you the individual students.
Looking at, you know, the same report from last year, right? There's third grade at a 25 last year and the year before. Okay, well then.
Right.
You can see in third grade, or is it a class thing that's.
It could be, or it could be an age thing. It's diversity of taking it. And then, but if you look at the, this is where you take the cohort and go, you know, go down this way. Follow the cohort and see if they grow. You know what I mean? And then, then because each group is different when they, when they take the test.
Yeah, where was that 92 last year? That's, I'm curious, yes.
So we presented.
Can I just say one more thing? It's not necessarily about the scores, but it's about the calendar stuff. We haven't done this in quite a long time, but I just, that they're having the Hall of Fame inductions for sports to be held the same night as the main event. I think that's kind of really nice.
Yeah, that's kind of cool. And I'd like to, I was looking at senior slideshow is on a separate night. What a brilliant idea. Then they can get as long and as in, as depth as they want and not take up three hours of graduation night. That's, that's a great idea. I love that. Where's the seventh graders going this year?
Seventh grade?
Yeah, it's the seventh grade field trip is the same day as graduation.
I can't remember. I just can't remember.
That's okay, I'm just curious. I don't need to know, honestly, I was just curious.
But I'm seventh grader and I also can't remember.
Okay, I don't feel so bad. No, it's, I was just curious, I don't need to know. But if Sharon finds out, she can put it in the minutes, then I'll read it now.
So you get information, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Committee reports. Did the.
Pause the committee meeting? No, so. You want me to go?
Sure, please.
My jump vote notes, but to follow up with your question, Jay, about the phases for the middle high school HVAC. The intention is to do it all in one. The only layout might be the middle school units may not be here quite in time, but they're going to do the curbs and everything, they're going to set everything off. I mean, they won't be able to set them, they'll have all the ductwork, all the wire and everything. So they'll just set it, it will not interfere with school at all. So, but that's just to follow up on your question, thinking last week. Safe Grant, we have one bid in for the windows only so far. We have one bid we're waiting on for the windows and the doors combined.
One of the beds closed?
It technically hadn't closed, but we're.
Exciting, okay. Good talk.
We're on to summer projects. They were going to concentrate on the beds, the brush and everything around it. Some of the outdoor work this year, other than their normal, tear the buildings down, the floors and all that stuff too. That was some of the crew stuff. We're trying to do a plan for bougherty tree removal for the summer dangerous trees that are widow makers and stuff. So we're going to do a walkthrough and try to come up with a plan for budgeting, come up with priorities and stuff like that. That's where we left that. In the timeframe, whatever, how much we have to hire out at a time, stuff like that. Elementary fence repair around the playground, we're going to replace that fence. Mark getting bid for it right now. That fence is pretty rough, it has been for a while. We'd like to replace the garage with a new building across the parking lot. Mark is actively getting prices on that too, maybe just to put a metal building there. Some of the, one of the prices I sell was, wasn't that outrageous? I won't bring it up now until we have more. At the same time, we do the groundwork over there. We'd like to change the entrance of the path coming down, see the crosswalk at the same time. We're going to pursue that too.
Perfect.
Now, that was it, pretty much the name.
And we had as part of the brush trimming this summer, to just trim back the school path. It's getting a little bit.
Yeah, I think that's what they were talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, all the brush trimming on the side, because that's stuff we can do in else.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Any other committees?
Risk management.
Yeah, and I don't have the notes, the notes we gave to Jason, and I don't know if he's had time to get them together yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, it's kind of divided and conquered and all split up into different areas so that we can get it done. It was exterior of both buildings and block hot stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a busy time of year for that, so.
We do have a technology meeting next week, so that will be on the next, or be.
Yeah, that was kind of rude of me not to ask easy here. Kevin, if they had anything to add. Okay.
Covered it.
It was, it was rude.
They didn't, they didn't seem bothered by it, for the record. Next up, staff nominations, recommendations, recognitions.
Yes, I have nomination for a school nurse, Courtney Genati.
Ooh, I'm making motion to be hired, Courtney Genati would be a school nurse.
Second.
Emphatically.
Thank you, Tammy, thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Absolutely are.
Yes.
Not motion carries, oh, sorry, abstentions or objections, not motion carries. Next up, SRO MOU.
Do you have any others?
Oh, we have another one, sorry. That's all right.
Peter Stavali, the new assistant principal.
Nice. I make a motion, we hire Peter Stavali as our assistant principal.
Thank you, Tammy and Joe. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions and welcome aboard to administration.
But resignation, Peter Stavali as a high school student.
I'll make a motion, we accept his resignation happily.
Tammy, thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, extensions and that motion carries as well.
So still two open positions?
We still have the special ed in the ELA and we are opening that up again in a soon.
All right. Okay, sorry. School Resource Officer memorandum of understanding.
Yes.
We see that we, we got a new copy of the. Of the MOU.
I think it covers what our concerns were.
Yeah.
Agree, yeah.
Yep, I think the concern was that the district maintains some elemental supervision. And I think that that addresses that. I know, I know, because he's a police officer and he's technically under the direction of the chief or sort of limited in our ability to directly supervise, but we.
There's a little oversight.
Yeah, we do, and I appreciate that, that the chief's willing to work with us on that because I think it's a sort of important part of it. So we, we need a vote to approve this this evening.
I'll make a motion that we approve the SRO MOU and authorize Jay to sign for the board.
Thank you, Tammy, thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? Any other questions on the changes or anything? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions and that motion carries.
Did you not understand that? School Resource Officer memorandum of understanding. Okay, thank you. He's looking at me like, okay. No.
So do you know what the timeline is for the, for the process, that application process?
Go to what's.
For the, yeah, School Resource Officer.
Oh, that would be, yeah, we're going to be looking at that next week. So the interview process will start with, we'll have administrator and teacher involved.
Great.
In the middle box of high school. And that will begin, hopefully we'll get that starting after Memorial Day. So by the next meeting, we'll always have something to tell you.
Potentially a candidate.
Right.
And how does that work as far as? I mean, technically they're going to be hired by the department. And so it'll just be, you're providing us the information of who they chose. So we don't, we don't have the selection authority there.
I think we all know before the meeting.
They'll bring the candidates.
It's like, we'll know.
All right, next up is Safe Grant bids. Is that what, is that what we're talking about, the windows and doors?
We're just going to keep that open and wait and see if anything else comes.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully by, by the next meeting, we need something.
Right.
Or we're not going to ever use this plan. Because it has to be all, at least contract has to be in place before the end of June.
Is there a limit, do we, is there an issue that we just don't have enough bids? And then, or can we not just accept one of the bids that we have?
Well, just partial, we were hoping for a full bid of everything we had.
Oh, right, one, just windows, yes, gotcha.
Yeah, we just put the bids out there, should we, or could we reach out? To some company, we have, we have some company.
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha, okay, sorry. And it's not.
Yeah, we have.
Okay. Okay.
Anything in the SRF funds or strategic plan? Continuing business?
Everything's going.
Okay. And then you'll say anything under new business, so. And so students, student representative.
So, going on to high school, I recently did suicide prevention training, which was for freshmen and seniors to get trained about, just like information about suicide prevention. Training was really awesome. It was held in Plymouth at the Common Man. Got there about eight o'clock, I would say, till like back the end of the day. The biggest thing that I learned from it was like recognize and connect. So something I did today was I went to the sophomore class, which is this services health class, and I just taught a lesson with Dalton, Lilic and Aubrey Calder and Kason Burrows. And we just taught the sophomore class, like what are some like signs? And like what are some, some risks that people show from the thing suicidal? And how to just like reach out and help them. A big, another like big thing was like, we can't tell them, or like we can't like act like a counselor or what? Like, because we are students, like we have homework, we have other things. So our biggest thing is just like let people, inform people that can help them or know. And then I think tomorrow, we have another group of students that are going to go to Mr. Gunter's, I think, middle school and kind of like soften it up a little bit and kind of teach them about that as well. Hopefully in the future, we can spread more through the community, so maybe some adults on the community. And that's a good thing about, I did do something, which is the markets at the beginning of the month. Another thing, Student Council is planning some spirit days for after graduation, just to celebrate the next senior class coming up, which should be my class. So that's something we want to do, right? We've got some class fundraisers coming up. So the sophomores are playing a car wash on this Saturday from 10 to 2 at the school. So if you want a car wash.
And bake sale too, right?
And bake sale, and bake sale as well. Car wash and bake sale. And the junior class is planning a pizza for the people this coming Tuesday at the farmhouse. If you'd like to get some pizza and support my junior class, that's also happening. So another note I had was the CTE programs in Littleton, which is something I'm interested in this year. They offer all kinds of extra curators. So I'm currently doing a kind of like, it's like a healthcare terminology part, which is part one for sophomores and juniors. And then next year, you get the option to go to the part two, which is the LNA. And then next year, the new one that they're introducing, which I'm going to be taking, is a dental assistant program, which is going to be brand new. It's just really cool and important. And yeah, and something I realized was maybe we could do like tours up there to kind of show it. Because I realized that other schools have been doing like tours for sophomores and juniors. I didn't know if we did tours up there. And they would just come back with our group. So it'd be from, we get there like 7:20 ish, 7:15 in the morning, and then we all leave at around like 9:10, 9:30. And it's just a really cool experience. And you can get college credit because you can take the running start option, which I'm currently doing. And it's just really good to kind of get that boosted. So like, what a college class would be like, and you get college credit for it. And it's one less, it's like one extra step that you can take before college. So it's a really good idea. I recently also did my job shadow at the Main Street Dental in Littleton. I got to see all kinds of things, people getting a crown, something getting their tooth extracted, how to test for comatose, all kinds of things. So it's like, it was cool to see.
I love how happy they're.
What all these doing, hopefully in the future. And yeah.
Great job.
Thank you for coming.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How many students participated in the suicide prevention training?
Um, it was me and eight other students, two freshmen. It was like maybe three or four, I don't really know. And there was like nine students in total. And then we had Mr. Gunter, Miss Bell went for like the teachers.
And when they're students from other schools.
Yeah, so we also did, yeah, Plymouth and New Found. It was just a great experience to have a kind of like youth trying to teach like other youth and also adults. Because as they were saying, like you've been like, like, when you're in like high school and like through middle schools, like they're like looking at a lot of research and like, these are the years that a lot of suicides are happening, whether it's just at home, with schoolwork. And they were mentioning how every minute that the like clock is ticking, there's always one suicide every single minute. So it was really good that we spread awareness about it.
One of the things I thought that was really impressive about this training is that they offered it, they, they basically said any student who was interested could fill out this Google form, and but we could only take nine students. But, but I think we would be able to bring more on another year. But we had, we had, I think, 14 or 15 students in ninth through 11th grade who were willing to go and learn and then teach younger kids about what they learned at this training. I thought, I thought it was awesome.
That's impressive.
And I like the component of coming back into the school and doing the teaching on your own. That's great.
Yeah, that's commendable.
Absolutely fantastic.
I had a question for you on one of the issues, the pizza for the people. I know that last time the class wanted to do that, there was a little bit of confusion about, about the fundraising issue.
I don't think it was a class that wanted to do it.
It was always a club that wanted to do it.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and that's.
But that was, that issue was resolved and that went ahead, okay? So that's, okay, so. All right. Thank you.
You can go if you don't want to stay, because you have things to do. Homework and.
So I'm Heather Krill, and I'm the staff person here. I have some brave news to share from Diana Pamplin and Erin Louts. They wanted to share that they recently held their annual kids heart challenge, which used to be jump rope for hearts. Yeah, there's some here. And they raised $2,100 that went directly to the American Heart Association. There's a large display on the wall outside at the elementary library. So go check that out while you're here. Leading up to the event, students learned about healthy heart habits in their P E classes. And all students in grades K through five participated in the event that took place during the school day. And I was lucky enough to witness this event firsthand. There's more energy in that gym. If we could bottle it up, we would feel less old. They were amazing. Erin also shared that next Friday is the annual, second annual Linwood Bike to School Day. Students and families will meet at the tank ski area at 7:15 a.m. So you meet at seven, but they want to take off by seven fifteen. Yeah. And ride down Pollard Road to school. We encourage all of you to participate. It was a lot of fun last year. I did end up walking in the back until Tammy picked us up with the van, with the van. We had kindergarten, yeah, didn't quite make it, but it was a wonderful community event.
That's a week from Friday, correct?
It's June 2nd, yeah, yeah, a week from this Friday, yeah. Um, also from Chrisy Durris and Peter. Stavali, the senior class trip was amazing. They raced go-karts, jumped on trampolines, and played in the ninja wipeout course at Supercharge. On Friday afternoon. On Saturday, they opened six flags and they raced to do as many rides as possible. For the lines grew, what fun they had, Superman was a favorite. The class, as we hoped, came together and truly bonded as they never had before. Before we left, the hotel complimented the group, stating it was one of the most respectful they have ever had.
Nice.
Um, thank you for your support in making this opportunity a reality. And then Rebecca and Erin and I just wanted to share that both our boys of summer and girls of summer groups have met. And we are all excited to kick off a summer of outdoor adventure. That is it.
Thank you.
Nice.
I'd like the positive feedback, let's see, yes.
Yes, absolutely.
It's good to hear. Community. So just as a reminder, it's three minutes per person, uh, total of fifteen minutes generally. Um, obviously, the board has discretion to stem that if there's, if there's some issues, but, um, we asked that the, that we. Keep in mind, um, you know, student confidentiality when, when, uh, making remarks. Anyone from the community? If you could just come up and identify yourself.
Um, Trinity Mitchell.
Thank you.
And I have a letter. I believe the letter was brought to your attention. I'm actually gonna edit, so there's no confidentiality stuff going on here. Within fifteen minutes, my family's life changed. On December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. A teacher and friend of mine Facebook messaged me asking for a photo. Of a student dunking at that night's basketball game. She said she wanted to show the photo to her husband and daughter. Ten minutes later, I sent the photo. Two minutes after that, she messaged saying we needed to talk and asked if she could come and speak with me. In my office, she told me she had developed romantic feelings for a student and believes that he feels the same way about her. This student was seventeen years old and a senior in high school. His teacher is in her forties. It's been a little over five months since that conversation, and I am angrier than ever. This teacher was able to resign on her own terms and is now able to attend all end of year events culminating in graduation. She is allowed on school campus and at sporting events. She is not in jail. She is not labeled a predator or an abuser of power. Other than losing her teaching license, she is a free woman. We followed all of the rules. We did everything that the school, the police, the Department of Education, and the Office of Civil Rights told us to do. Every step of the way, we waited for someone to share in our disappointment, sadness, disgust, and outrage. We waited for someone to tell us they were sorry and that there would be change. Teachers and administrators claim to have no knowledge of anything having been wrong, and that they were surprised to learn of this particular situation. However, it has come to light that these same teachers and administrators and previous ones. Have all been protecting this teacher and themselves over the past ten years, even if only by blindness and inaction. At this time, I, I am aware of eight previous students of hers that are also victims. They groomed them in the same way she groomed this student. There were varying levels of attempts to have her removed from interacting with these other boys, but the school did nothing to protect them or future students either. The school's refusal to see her as the abuser she is, enabled to victimize children. I see this clearly as the school saying it's okay and protecting the children at Linwood is not their concern or primary objective. There's something wrong with the system. The system that endangered this student is the same system that we had to work with to resolve the issue. The people I looked to for advice and guidance were the ones that wanted to see this. All go away as quietly as possible. Looking back, it is clear that every piece of advice I received. Was aimed at making sure no one was held accountable and that the school was protected. That's it. I think we can do better. I want to add that at the end of the note. I think Linwood can be better. I think it's a great school.
Does anyone have any other community input? Um, then I will. Thank you, Tammy, thank you, Joe. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.